Phil? Hello, good evening. I'd like to call the order of the workshop of April 3rd, 2023. First on the agenda is a presentation from our city manager about our budget and five-year capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So this is the first look at the preliminary budget for FY24. We did have our last meeting on March 20th. We had the school superintendent here. We really spent most of the time talking about the school budget. The superintendent was able to share with you the, at least her budget message that outlined where some of the impacts were coming for her budget. Since then, many of you probably read in newspaper regarding increased revenue from the state for school. Those, that'll be something for the school committee to work through and then come forward to you with their recommendation. So what I'd like to talk about tonight is just the city side of the budget, which includes city and intergovernmental budgets. And so we'll walk through that. I think it's important probably to begin with is to talk about where was our starting point for this FY24 budget. If you take a look at growth and trajectory of growth over each year, FY23, each year we look at the budget. Each year we look at, are there any cliffs coming up for the next budget? And so when we saw some of the increases in revenue for FY23, you know, my immediate thought is how will we sustain that come FY24? When we put the budget together. So starting out the gate for FY23, we were looking at $2.8 million in reduced revenue over FY23. Part of that had to come from, part of that rather came from the state revenue share. We saw a very big increase in state revenue share based on what was taking place at the State House. The governor allocating the funds that we received through our revenue share funds, total amount being provided to municipalities. In FY23, we also recognized that we were not capturing all the administrative costs for CDBG services within the FY23 budget. So that adjustment was made. That was 300 and roughly $360,000. The, and then we had some other miscellaneous impacts with the budget, which showed for a decrease of that 2.8 million. That we needed to make sure how are we gonna, how are we gonna do that again for this year? Which we knew that we weren't going to be able to hit that coming in, but that was our starting point. The other starting point we had was expenses. Our expenses growth from FY23, we were looking at $5.2 million. That $5.2 million included workforce market adjustments. That has been, and Council, you've been well aware of it as we've worked through many collective bargaining agreements with our unions. The workforce adjustment is what every private sector, public sector is also working through. Those are salaries, overtime, fringe increases for benefits. And then our operating costs, our utilities, our fuel, cost of goods, general assistance, and county tax. So those were all the driving factors as we were starting off this budget, looking at a $5.2 million expense increase. What we're proposing tonight, so for the city manager's preliminary budget anyway. I say preliminary only so for the, just for the public and for the council to be aware of. The actual proposed final city management, city manager budget will be on April 18th. That's when by charter, that budget that's proposed on the 18th will be what's, what you will refer back to if the council's not able to adopt a budget by June 30th. So that's why I want to make sure we're clear that that's, that will be the budget that we'll look at, is that April 18th budget. But this is the preliminary one. This is one that we're still finalizing some of our numbers. We're still getting, confirming numbers for health insurance increases, still confirming where we are coming at on some of our collective bargaining units. So there's still a lot of pieces that are moving on this. But I'm, I'm hopeful that within the next couple of days, we're gonna lock all that down and you'll see, see the budget. And I'm hopeful that it'll be the budget that you see here tonight. So the, what we're proposing tonight is that 2.8 million that I talked about would reduce revenue growth is, tonight, it's a reduction of 1.4 million. We were able to meet that by, again, increased state revenue share for this year. Increasing a TIF offset, one thing we have in our budget every year is TIF offset. When actually going through that, TIF offset isn't always adjusted every year. We spent some time, went through the various items that are covered as far as TIF offsets. That was made within this, this, this budget under our revenue. There were some miscellaneous adjustments, you know, totaling about a quarter million dollars of just miscellaneous changes when it comes to whether it's licensing permits, various different, you know, we have probably close to, you know, I would say, close to 300 line items within our revenue account. So various ones that might have seen 20,000 here, 20,000 there, those, those various ended up equalling about a quarter million dollars. What you'll see in this budget is fund balance remaining the same as what we put for fund balance last year with no change. We had increased our fund balance last year. I think it's wise for us to try to hang on to that amount and not increase that. The more that we increase that creates that cliff that we've been talking about for that year, that, that fund balance may not necessarily be in there. The fund balance that we're proposing will keep us within the percentage of what the charter, what you have proposed regarding, policy rather, regarding what's in the fund balance. So it's keeping us within that. We'll have the exact amounts in there for you at the, at the next meeting. We're meeting with our advisor. We're looking at the fund balance from what was the finalized approved fund balance from last year. I will have that number for you and then also the percentage. So, so we will work that out for the April 18th meeting. Expense growth adjustments. As I said, we started off this budget process at $5.2 million. The expense growth adjustment for this year, we will be at $2.6 million. If you take a look at this table that I'm using, we always show history. So you have your first two columns are the two previous adopted budgets of the city council, just so that you can see what's been there. History within our operating. This is a summary sheet that you're pretty familiar with. It's in every budget. The only thing different from this is I've removed all school reference in this. Tonight, we're just talking about the city budget. So there's no school reference. I don't want to put in any number that I'm not 100% sure of where the school's coming in at because they haven't presented us their final numbers yet. So the numbers you're looking at tonight are just school, just city and intergovernmental. So if you take a look at our operating on that first column, the operating expenses. Council adopted last year nearly 35 million in operating expenses. As I mentioned, that's $2.4 million of increase from, from the previous year. The increase in FY23 was 3.1 million. So when I talk about that trajectory, this is about trying to keep that trajectory so that we're not hitting that number plus each year. To do that, several, several adjustments had to be made. And some of these, and I had kind of started to see was gonna be needed probably around October, November of this year as we're thinking about the budget, thinking about what we're looking at, looking at just, you know, we look at our monthly expenses and seeing what our increases were on fuels, what our increases were on utilities, anticipating that we were going to be faced with a steep climb here for the FY24 budget. So in, in October, November, I did put a freeze on hiring of certain positions, just anticipating where we would be today. In this budget that's proposed is 12, a reduction of 12 positions. Those are positions that don't, they do not have anyone currently working in those positions. There'll be no layoffs as a result of the reduction of these 12 positions. They were just anticipated necessity to reduce the workforce. Those positions equal four within the police department, four within public works, and four within the fire department. All other positions remain the same within this budget. And then reduce services. So you can't, you can't look at reducing 12 positions and not, no, not understand that there's gonna be a reduction in services as a result of that. The council had approved four additional positions within the fire department. Part of that was to reduce overtime costs, but also was to implement rolling out the third ambulance through, through emergency, the emergency management services. We, I'm keeping that third ambulance option in here. We put money in to be able to fund that. However, we're only operating that probably 20% of the time. Part of this is to see what's the, you know, we know where our growth is, we know where some of our demands are, but we will only be rolling it out during the most peak hours that the, the fire department recognizes as, when, when are we more apt to have an increased response time from our, from our rescue services? So, so that'll be the goal in this upcoming year for approved by you, Council, will be that our third ambulance will be out 20% of operating time. Pace was the other budget adjustment that you had made last year within the police department. As you know, we've been really faced with staffing challenges within the police department. We have been down, up, at least up, down rather, 12 vacancies throughout, at one point or another throughout the year. So with that, we had not been able to stand up that unit. And so I'm actually proposing in this year that we, we, we continue not standing up that unit. That unit was, had to do a lot with traffic enforcement and also the efforts that the chief had presented last year regarding some of the drug enforcement that he felt was necessary within the community. So, so this budget does not include that. And then just maintenance labor. So we'll need to look at maintenance labor as far as public works. What will we be outsourcing? What will we be keeping in-house? Public works is working through that currently. And some of it is a delay of work. So, you know, I think that it's important to take a look, and we've talked about this over the years, taking a look at, you know, if we have, say, 20 parks throughout the city, does it make more sense to take a look and say, okay, where are our priority parks? Which ones do we want to spend time in? And which ones should just be, just mowing of those, those parks for green space? But not necessarily having equipment and other beautification in some of those parks that would require more services. So that'll be something that they will work up as far as their reduction of workforce to make sure we're hitting that. We already operated this winter season with a reduced workforce based on the fact that, one, I did free some positions, but we also had, we've had challenges just like everyone else in hiring for a workforce. So hiring and filling these vacancies has been challenging. We ran with less plow trucks this year. That same staffing model for, for plowing next year is what's, what I'm proposing in this budget. So for the taxpayers, what you saw this year for plowing will be what you see next year. So that means a shift in some of our priority roads, which means delays in some of those, and also a reduction in how many times they may come along and within a couple hours to plow that road. If you take a look at the city's operating, uh, city's budget rather, just so you get a sense of when we talk about reductions and where that comes from, 48% of the city's budget is salary and fringe for our personnel. 42% is in our operating and 10% is made up of our intergovernmental agreements and county tax. So I think that's a good, you know, it's good for you to keep in mind when we talk about where do reductions come from, you know, nearly 50% of this budget is our, is our staff. And, and so when we talk about that driving increase within our workforce to main, to be able to retain our workforce, that's where some of that, that increase is coming in at. I talked about the growth trajectory. Most budgets have a trajectory of similar growth year over year. You're gonna have standard cost increases that'll just keep increasing. The goal within this budget was to bring stabilization to that trajectory and try to reduce that trajectory, which I believe we have. City expenses are down 54% from the growth in FY23. Intergovernmental is down 96% from the growth in FY23. So our total expenses decreased by 58% from the growth in our FY23 budget. Again, looking at the growth, the increases within FY23 is what I'm comparing. That's the shaded area within this spreadsheet that you're seeing. So due to, due to the decrease in revenue in FY24, we're seeing a 102% decrease in revenue growth from the FY23 change that we saw, the variance. And then our total tax levy is decreasing by 17% from the growth in FY23. So when we start looking at that trajectory component that helps us know where we are this year. This year, we are not seeing the same type of growth that we, that we, that occurred in FY, FY23. So when you take a look at our total city expenses, total increase is 2.4 million. Our intergovernmental is 235,000. The intergovernmental services you're seeing is only a $24,000 increase. Some of that's been offset. If you take a look at L A T C, which is our transit, we had, we had CARES monies that were left over in this year from that budget. Proposing that they allocate that to reduce our increase for next year. So we're actually seeing a decrease in, in what was being projected for, for FY24 from L A T C. 911 had a small increase. And then airport is flat funded. And then there were some adjustments with, as we take a look at LA arts and Historical Society came before you regarding budget requests. Their request was for $60,000. What I'm proposing is that we look at Anders Skargen Historical Society, much like we do some of our other intergovernmental and, and services. And so what I'm proposing is a fixed $10,000 each year within, within our intergovernmental funds. That will help pay for, sustain some of their, some of the growth that they're seeing, the facility that they have. You know, I think that they did a great job when they came in and presented, talking about accessibility to what we have within, within the Historical Society. We also have two buildings in Auburn, and that's the, the Knight House and also the West Auburn Schoolhouse. So there's, there's costs that are being borne on the, the Historical Society. I think that $10,000 rather than giving the full $60,000, it'll just be $10,000 each year. And Council, that'll be up to you to decide whether or not you want to change that. But I thought, and I spoke to Historical Society about this as well, just felt having that $10,000, being able to budget that $10,000 each year would be better than coming back before you and asking for another lump sum in, in the future. That could just be a steady, a steady stream for them to be able to budget for their new building costs. So as you bring on a new facility like they are, they'll have costs annually that'll be coming in. These funds might be able to help offset that. The, so the total expenses are increasing 2.6 million. And then I talked about the non-tax revenue. When we take a look at non-tax revenue, those are the state revenue share, those are CDBG reimbursements, the TIF offset that I mentioned, some of those other miscellaneous revenue accounts. Each department, when you, when you take a look at the budget, each department has various line items within the revenue budget that adjust based off from their services. So if you take a look at marijuana licensing is one where we're, we talked about this. We're gonna see this major growth that took place within the marijuana licensing. And then it was gonna plateau, which it did last year, and then we're gonna see a decrease. We're seeing that decrease now. Some of our marijuana businesses are, are closing because the market is adjusting. And so, so I believe we're, we're gonna stabilize somewhere around that $180,000 in, in fees. However, those fees, those licensing fees based on the state statute on that go back to, they should be pretty close to what your costs are. So we have an individual that works on licensing for marijuana businesses because of the, just the vast amount of licenses that we have. You might say you only see X amount of stores, but what you're not seeing is all the growing, grow facilities that are, are in Auburn that you don't necessarily see that require inspections. And for many departments have a role in inspecting those, those facilities. So we try to capture as much as we can from that. The, I'm not, I'm not proposing we make any increases in that, in the fee amounts. I think we came in probably when we first did this back in 2018, I think it was, or so, when we did some of these fees. We probably were, we were a little high from other municipalities that had opted in at that time. Now we're about average. So we have some municipalities that have certainly, their, their fees are pretty extreme compared to ours. But I think we're still, we're still where we need to be in covering our costs. Other non-tax revenues would be revenue that we receive for registrations, boats, vehicles. Those tend to fluctuate. We, we tend to watch them pretty closely. Jill and her team monitors that. We, we try to be as conservative as we can when we budget for some of those light items, knowing that the market shifts. And so, you know, things that we didn't think we'd see, if you go back and look at what the actual revenue increases were, you're gonna go back two years ago and see quite a spike. Couple of things happened. One, the state said you don't need to register your vehicle if it's expired because of COVID. And so some, but eventually you do, eventually you're gonna get caught up on that. Our, our catch-up was last year. So you're gonna, you see a higher number there. We don't want to put that number in again this year because there's no catch-up that's being done this year. But we still are seeing that a lot of people are buying new vehicles. And those are, so that's maintaining that growth trajectory that I keep speaking, speaking of. So you're gonna see some changes within that. The, we do not receive any non-tax revenue out of intergovernmental, so it's the 1.4 million. And if you take a look at the tax levy, tax levy is about taking what our total, total expense increases, reducing the non-tax revenue. What's remaining is what would be the tax levy. And so the tax levy for, for city expenses for FY24 is a million dollars. The intergovernmental is 235,000. We had a reduction, we had an overlay that was in there, and FY23, that adjustment was made. So the total city tax levy currently being proposed is 1.1 million dollars. So if you were to take that, and we were to say valuation remains the same, and we take, that was finalized last year, and we were to take that and we say, okay, how does that impact the mill rate? What does that look like? That 1.1 million means that the mill rate after adjustments from the previous year, remember, we had, we had the major market adjustment that took place that previous year, that reduced our mill rate considerably. The increase that's being proposed would be 1.1 million, which would be 41 cents on the mill rate for city services and 11 cents on the mill rate for intergovernmental at 52 cents currently as it sits. I think that, you know, when you take a look at the budget, and you'll, you'll receive your budget books probably by the end of the week. When you start looking at the budget books, you start looking into that. You know, right now, where the superintendent had reported at the last meeting, where we're, I'm proposing right now, we know the school will have some, some adjustments. But as it stands right now with what the school had presented, you know, we were about $1.15 on the mill rate is where we're coming in at. That obviously is gonna be changing with that change within the school. But that was an overall 5% increase in the budget. I don't know if you're, you're taking a look at other municipalities and what you're seeing, but this is nowhere near where some of those increases are. I think the team, the staff, the directors did a great job of really saying, okay, what are the priorities? This is a difficult year. We can't, we can't go in with huge increases within this. And these are manageable increases. It's still an increase, which is still a challenge. And that'll be what we now work on moving forward. The budget portal, I want to just keep making sure I remind people that we have that. But the budget portal for the manager's budget will be available on April 19th, the day after I present it to you on the 18th. So, questions about where we are? We'll get into CIP in a minute, but that's just the budget. That's your preliminary review, just so you know where, where things are coming in at. And you'll receive your full budget books, like I said, by the end of the week.
If I could, I mean, we talked, first of all, you know, hats off to staff on this. I think we've made some really good decisions and we've prepped for some bad times ahead a while ago. So, you know, again, congratulations. 5% will probably be, you know, probably below 4% once all the school savings happens with the increase in revenue and decrease in healthcare costs. We'll have those numbers in the next couple of days. But we're cutting services. And I, I just want to ask this one question on this. Looking out, looking forward, Phil, if everything stays the same, do you see another cliff? Or do you see us having to either make that decision next year of increasing taxes substantially or cutting, or further reduce, reduction of services?
I think, you know, what you will not see is the big shift within the revenue that we received in FY23. As long as things stabilize. So that means Homestead seems to have stabilized, right? We're gonna see modest increases each year until that, that the difference is being made up as far as the Homestead reimbursement amount from the state, right? So those modest increases, we can absorb pretty easily. You won't see major shifts. You'll see the, you're gonna see that there's funds in here regarding ARPA transfer. There are items in the budget that are being paid for by ARPA. Those services should be coming out when the ARPA funds end. So you should not see a cliff there. That means you'll see the reduction in revenue, but you're gonna also see it within the expense line item as well. So, you know, Mayor, you know, as we continue to project, you know, I'm not sure where we're gonna see with inflation. If inflation was to continue as it has impacted us in this budget, you're back to seeing more cliffs, which are gonna require more reduction in services, more reduced staff. There's no other way to meet that unless you're willing to say, yeah, we recognize that, but we're gonna go ahead and absorb that increase in inflation. The only way to absorb partial would be offsetting, offsetting your operating, which we've been doing as far as services, but also offsetting your, your staffing. So.
So you're saying that the real inflation problems are gonna be even exacerbated further next year?
If they continue, if the track continues. Because eventually, one thing that we're not seeing, you know, even though inflation is where it is, we're not seeing a change within our state revenue share. You know, our state revenue share, you know, is around $5.5 million. So when you take a look at our revenue as a city, that's a, that's an important number to make sure that we're watching, right? So now there's some bills in place on what, you know, a lot of what-ifs regarding the state revenue share. You know, I'm not banking on any of those. I think the goal is, can we maintain the core is the, the term that we use at the Legislative Policy Committee for Main Municipal Association? How do you maintain the core? The core is what we're currently getting for state revenue for percentage, and then what we're also receiving for Homestead reimbursements. How do you maintain that? Now, we've got to throw in the third variable that we're monitoring right now is the senior tax stabilization. Now, who knows where that'll land? Is it gonna be rewritten? Is it gonna, is it gonna be modified? Is it gonna be brought into Homestead? You know, we're watching that constantly, see which way, you know, there's about four bills that are gonna eventually probably blend into one here, and we'll see where that lands. Key is. Key is, the state has to reimburse the municipality for that loss within that tax stabilization. If they don't, then we're, we will be on, on the hook for that change. This is the same hook that happened, um, prior to when it came to state revenue share, when it came to Homestead exemption, when it came to school education. When those weren't being funded at what the amounts within legislation said it needed to be funded, municipalities had to make up the difference. So as long as all those continue, we should be fine. The governor's budget that was approved has all of what I'm saying right now in her budget. That was that, um, continuous, continuing budget. I think it might have been the term that was used when it was passed. So that has everything that we're talking about right now in that budget. As long as that continues, we should be fine for this year. Each year, we have to continue looking at it and make sure we're doing, we're advocating to make sure municipalities are receiving the funds that are written in legislation for us to receive. That doesn't always happen. Counselor Garrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where do we stand on our outside leases for like planning and permitting office? I know we've got some people housed, I mean, other staff members housed outside of here. How long was that agreement?
So the, I think you're talking about the CDBG staff. So CDBG staff, that lease is being paid for through ARPA. Those funds will continue, the, the amount was allocated within ARPA so that as long as we're moving forward with, uh, the public safety facility, which will be coming back before you, but right now it's just all that's in anticipation, then they should be able to fill, come back in once PD leaves the building. Uh, but those funds were budgeted within ARPA, so.
Any projection when everything will fall into place?
You have, you have your, uh, Engine Two, uh, in the CIP. We'll talk about that. Um, so that will start moving that project. Part of getting CIP, Engine Two prepared and ready will be to shift the fire admin out of Central, shift the staff out of Central Station, Engine Two and other locations, um, so that then the main public safety facility can be done. That all requires your approval and the voter's approval on that second phase. So I, I, when I, as I mentioned, I always wanna make sure we have that asterisk in there so that folks know that there's, that's just not a done deal at this point. All right. Budget, you'll get the budget books. You'll be able to get in and start taking a look at, uh, where some of those driving costs are coming in at. Uh, CIP, um, Dan, do you wanna jump up to, next to Brian there? I'm not going to go through the, I did provide you just the, the narrative that you see, um, here on the first six pages. And this was, this was available online. Um, that's the narrative that I shared with you, um, at the previous, uh, the March twentieth meeting. So that's, I had already worked through all that, talked to you about that. Um, and then I also went through and spoke about the FY twenty-four projects. Again, just so you, counsel, so you're aware of the, where the order of things that takes place. Uh, we'll talk about CIP. This is, really wanna talk about the CIP plan. So this is the five-year review tonight. This is what we wanna spend some time on, ensuring that are there any future projects that you see as a priority, that we should be including in the plan? This is that, that opportunity to discuss that. I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, Council Walker did bring to my attention that the age-friendly, uh, committee had, um, listed as one of their priorities, uh, last year, and I didn't include it, so it's included now. The additional parking that's needed at the senior center, so that's included in here with FY twenty-five. That would require us really taking a look at that, that space, um, and determining how, what, how best do you, um, place that parking lot? Uh, we wanna make sure grades are accurate, so if we have a lot of seniors, we wanna make sure that it's accessible. Um, you know, and I think the, you know, preliminary, just taking a look at the spot, you know, Dan was, was able to connect with the engineers, just look at that space and say, I think they could probably build about a twenty, uh, twenty parking lot space kinda on the backs, on the, uh, as you're coming down the hill. It would be on that, the, uh, the side before you get to the building. Somewhere's in there we could take a look at, uh, additional twenty spaces with, with good accessibility. Um, so that's the only change that you see in this five-year plan, uh, from, from the previous, previous, uh, from the earlier night, um, the March twentieth meeting. What Dan does is he does work, he sits down and with, um, each of the directors. They talk about, uh, facilities, they talk about equipment, they talk about, um, what do we, you know, what's coming up for the maintenance schedule for replacements that are capital-related, um, not just regular maintenance within, within their operating budget that they should be planning on. These are capital-related expenses. The five-year plan doesn't mean that that's what we're going to fund or bond every year. The five, the plan is just that, a plan. It's to say, what do we know right now? What do we know over the next five years? And let's make sure we're documenting that so that you have an idea of where we're headed. Um, and you'll see FY twenty-four, it's about almost fifteen million. FY twenty-five and twenty-six, you're gonna see much larger increases. That forty million and thirty-five million, and that's because it's accounting for the, uh, increase that's needed for the public safety building. And then you'll see it come back down about ten million. That ten million will grow, so you know, so when you, when FY twenty-seven comes around, you're gonna say, hey, if I go back to that plan that was presented in FY twenty-four, said that that CIP was gonna be ten million. Well, that's because there's usually about another five million of changes that usually happen. Um, that's because of things that we weren't anticipating right now, uh, will anticipate over the next couple of years. And so we're always right around, right around that each year, and the same amount, roughly the same amounts included in FY twenty-eight. You've had a chance to look at that. Do you have, do you have questions regarding the CIP plan? That was posted, um, in the, in the packet on March thirtieth. That is the charter requirement, so that was posted in accordance with charter. Uh, now you have it. You will, you will approve the CIP plan first. That'll be something that you'll approve, um, probably at our next meeting. If there's not any other changes at the April eighteenth meeting, that's where you'll approve the plan. And then, and then we'll still be talking about the FY twenty-four bond, bonding. That's really where we start really getting into conversations. What, what are we looking at for this FY twenty-four year? And then what will we approve for bonding? Questions? Counselor Staples?
Yeah, excuse me. Uh, so I was looking into the, the HVAC stuff that's, that's in this year's CIP. Um, you know, it wasn't that long ago, we had, uh, a discussion here at council about using potential ARPA funds for some of the HVAC needs or, or, or at least a, a look at our HVAC with, with some ARPA funds. Um, and I'm looking back at last year's CIP, there was something in, in there for Hasty's HVAC then, but it was a much lower amount. So I, I guess, I would just like to hear a little bit about what the HVAC, uh, story is this year.
Yeah.
Just, you know, in general, like what, how, how are we addressing these things? And are we addressing the highest priorities and what's remaining?
Yeah. So you're, you're jumping to FY twenty-four, which is okay, we'll jump to that. So FY twenty-four, if you take a look at that FY twenty-four, um, budget on page eleven of your sheet, uh, you're gonna see where we have the, uh, exhaust fan and control system upgrade, and then for Norway Savings Bank Arena, and then also the Hasty HVAC replacement ventilation upgrades. You had, even though we had, if you recall, we had brought a presentation, talked about the overall, all of our HVAC systems regarding ARPA. You had already budgeted, Dan, what, what did we have in FY twenty-three?
I wanna say it was one point, I mean, not one point, uh, right around two hundred thousand when you combine the two. There was money for Hasty, and there was also money for Norway? Yes, for Norway. It was right around two hundred thousand when you combine the two.
The money that was budgeted within FY twenty-three, we were able to use those funds to secure the parts, right?
Some of the parts, yes.
Not all of them. So that money was, has been spent and allocated. That was FY twenty-three. ARPA funds never moved forward. So that, we did not do anything with, with that. What's being proposed in FY twenty-four is to take the five fifty for Hasty and the sixty-eight for Norway. That other column is ARPA funds. So it wouldn't be bonded, would be in ARPA. ARPA, if you were to, the first, probably one of the first sections within ARPA that talks about what should you use ARPA funds for, HVAC systems are the number one priority.
Can I get some clarity? Fiscal year twenty-two, we approved, uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for Hasty HVAC inefficiency. According to this, we're, I'm on page three. We still have a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars left in that account.
Which page three are you on?
Uh, page three, uh, top of page three, fiscal year twenty-two, CIP. Looks like, uh, we spent or encumbered two fifty-three, we have, uh, a hundred and twenty-one thousand left over. I just wanna know what, is that money, we haven't spent it yet? Is there something, some reason why?
While we encumbered the two fifty-three that I think Dan was talking about, go ahead, Dan, I'll let you talk about where we are in the parts.
We haven't spent that one twenty-one part of it to see is on purpose because we don't wanna spend the engineering costs before we get approval to actually install. So we need that, if we get approval for the five fifty, I think that's what the total is. If we get approval for the five fifty, then we're gonna spend that one twenty-one. If we don't get approval for that five fifty, we're gonna wait or reallocate or do something with that one twenty-one because we're not gonna spend all the engineering costs to do something that we don't have the money to do.
Yeah. So I say spent means, it's, it's at least encumbered, so that's what, that we're currently doing right now within those funds.
Yeah, that two fifty is actually spent, but.
I've got a question, dealing with the Ingersoll. We've been talking about doing something for climate control so that we can use, utilize it more throughout the year. Where does that sit?
So it's still in the five-year plan, but it's for FY twenty-seven. If you look on page, page one of the, when you start taking a look at the five-year plan, it's, um, it's in there for FY twenty-seven.
But wouldn't it make sense to do it sooner than later so we could generate some sort of income and develop a reputation for a facility that we can rent out or use?
If you do the cost benefit, you can't make enough money to pay for it at this time.
Part of this is about just waiting and seeing, right? We've been talking about a new turf facility that's been in the conversations. Some of that is just saying, okay, we'll keep, we'll keep moving that out. If there's no new turf facility and that's still a priority, know that it's a priority without recouping the costs, so.
In other words, the cost of the, of the air conditioning exceeds the revenue we're gonna make out of it.
One thing that I just wanna make sure the council's aware of too. Um, this is an extremely high interest year on borrowing. And, you know, no slight towards Jill, she gets the best rates possible, but the best rates still are pretty bad compared to years past. A couple of years ago, we did, it was twenty twenty-one, I don't have it in front of me. We did a significant, uh, we actually added money, sort of capital improvements to the CIP because mu- money was cheap. I think our bonded rate, interest rate is like one and a half percent. It was extremely low. Steve, you remember that, you're here when we did that. Say again?
We did something with the water.
That's right, that's right, same time. So we took advantage of cheap money, basically free money at the time. Um, I just want the council to think about this as we go through, and you will have a chance later on in this process to make amendments and motions to amend this budget, uh, the CIP, as well as the budget. Um, if there's certain things that you feel you can push off for another year or two years, uh, just waiting for money to get a little bit cheaper, we can do that.
I'd, I'd like to make a comment, uh, what Dana had said there. I think that the Hasty, uh, is very important to get done, and I think the five fifty should come out of the ARPA money. If we look back at what we said, we were gonna give all of our taxpayers back for, at, uh, four hundred dollars or three hundred, whatever the final number we came up with. We only had a very small number that, that, uh, applied for that. And we had put aside a big number, and I don't remember exactly what it was, but I'll, I'll bet it'll cover three quarters of this Hasty, for instance. But I, I think using the ARPA money is a smart choice, and that could give us a chance to, uh, move something else in that place if we really needed something else.
We'll, we'll provide for you at the next meeting just where we are on that. So they, all checks have been cut and sent to, uh, the seniors. And so, uh, so we should have a, we should have a report on that for the next meeting.
Be a lot of conversations going back and forth over the next couple of weeks. Um, if there's nothing else, we'll move on, Phil, if you're good. Okay. Okay. Uh, let's move on the agenda then. Next, Mr. Eric Cousins is gonna talk about Lewiston Falls Monte Hydro Licensing FERC. Seems like this has been going on for about, what, fifty years?
Since nineteen eighty-six.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This is really just to make sure that, um, you know, we're still working on this. Uh, last time we talked about it was in, uh, June of last year. Um, staff has spent a fair amount of time over the last few weeks, um, going through the thousand and forty-six page, um, study plan that we were given at the beginning of the month. Um, had a couple of questions, um, from the public about how to access it. So I was just gonna show you and anybody else who's watching. You click on the link in the, uh, council, um, info sheet, and then once you get to this page, you have to click on file list. Um, if you do wanna dig into the details, and then you click on this link here, I'm not gonna do it because it takes a long time to download. We have gone through the majority, uh, of the report. I think you've given us, you and previous councils have given us what we need to advocate for outcomes that will benefit Auburn. Um, between the comp plan, the new Auburn master plan, um, the strategic plan, there's a lot of focus on downtown riverfront access, river recreation, um, and natural resources. And we've been able to use that, um, as the basis for advocating for, um, at this stage, the right studies to be done um, so that we have the information that we need, uh, to advocate for outcomes later, um, based on usage flows, um, a number of things. We've really focused on the recreation and aesthetic piece. Um, I think we have qualified fisheries agencies at the state and federal level that are really focused on the fisheries, and Auburn's goal is really, um, centered around recreation, um, and aesthetics. We'll continue to monitor those. There will be an opportunity later this summer, uh, to, uh, participate in stakeholder groups around recreational uses and aesthetics, um, trying to identify which flows are ideal for, um, different views of the falls, um, different uses on the river. Some of the uses will conflict with each other, uh, desiring different flows. Um, but the varied flows over the course of the season, um, we aim to really understand that what flows are the right flows for different types of recreation, and then eventually be able to, to have a way to either create those flows, um, as a mitigation measure at certain times of the year, or to at least identify when they exist so the public knows when is the best time to recreate in a, in a given way, um, on the river. Some good data, I think, that'll be useful for other city efforts. Um, Brookfield quantified the amount of recreational usage by, um, recreational user days, um, between Memorial Day and Labor Day last year around the river. Um, I won't go into all of the details in the thousand-page document, um, but, um, eight thousand four hundred and eighteen recreation days were documented as an estimate on the North River Road boat launch alone, um, being used at sixty-two percent of the capacity. Um, those trips were fifty percent canoe kayak, thirty-eight percent motorboat, and a smaller number of, uh, people just there for, for other reasons, including fishing. Um, West Pitch Park showed over sixteen thousand rec days, uh, during that same period, eighty percent were. 80% were repeat visitors, 20% were first timers. And they noted that a majority of the recreational visits were centered around big event weekends during that time period, so the events make a difference, I guess is what I, I gather from that. Festival Plaza, smaller number, mostly weekdays, but a total rec day estimate of 210,814 recreation days along the Riverwalk, West Pitch, the Lewiston side of the river, Sunnyside Park surrounding this facility, so significant recreational use. At this stage, we're just in the study phase. We'll be advocating for outcomes later when we get to the license application, but we're trying to make sure that we have the information we need to advocate for outcomes later. A shortcoming, I think, so far in the study report is that they assume a similar level of usage in 2066. I think we have an opportunity to really grow that usage, and in the past 30 years, it's certainly grown during that period, so we'll advocate for ways to make sure that there's either a way to monitor that or document an anticipated increase in use over time when we get to the point of actually looking for mitigation measures to mitigate the impacts of the facility. Additional access points, they're recognizing the need for that. There'll be two stakeholder groups put together this summer as part of that process. Myself and Jonathan Labonte as staff plan on participating, and if there's any of you or someone in particular you wanted included on those, we can advocate for somebody to be included in those stakeholder groups for either recreation on or around the river or for aesthetics. Want to be mindful of trying to give you your 30 minutes at the end of this, for the second half of this hour, but I do think that the studies so far are recognizing the city plans. They recognize the comp plan, the strategic plan, new Auburn master plan, multiple bike ped plans, the Andersgagen Greenway plan. I think we're, we're getting that information in there so that it can be the basis for mitigation at the end of the, the process. Next step for 2023 on recreation, as I mentioned, those focus groups. There'll be an initial focus group that is worked with for kind of evaluating the information that they put together so far. There's a lot of pictures, you can see this as just one page in the report. There's a lot of documentation of different recreational opportunities within the project area that would then become the focus of the group to understand what's there, understand the shortcomings, and then to look at what additional facilities or improvements need to be made as part of that license. It's a 40-year license, it's a long time. Probably not many of us here will be a part of that license application, and not many of us here, other than Mr. Beal and, and John, were a part of the last one. So it's a kind of a once-in-your-career opportunity for most of us to be a part of it. Draft license application will come in '24 or '25. The final study plan after the review groups will be out, anticipated in December of this year, '23. And we'll continue to participate in that process as it develops. As far as aesthetics, generating capacity is 6,600 cubic feet per second, so with that flow coming down the river, they can run all of that water through the turbines and none of it over the falls. If you look at this report, there's a lot of images of different flows. That'll be the start of the aesthetic review, but they have the ability to run less through the turbines, open certain sections of the inflatable bladders on the dams, and to pull water over the falls. It's estimated that before the dam was there, there were about 140 days where there was really visible water over the falls. Now about 40 days in a given year, and that fluctuates from year to year, but those are average estimates. So that's one of the things that the city could advocate for mitigating is that the facility has taken away some of those days of flows, and we could look at ways to bring some of those back. Around 8,000 cubic feet per second really starts to look impressive over the falls and show a lot of overflow over the bladders while they're generating, and then below that, they would have to back off the generators in order to put more water over the falls. There's a lot of scenarios shown in the draft study report. There'll be two more steps in that study process this summer with the stakeholder group to first look at what's available for information now, but then to actively look at different scenarios with water over the falls, with different bladders releasing water and different flows coming into the facility. So really just wanted to make sure you know that we're still following this. We will be putting together comments on the study reports. The biggest one so far that I see is that it's not anticipating growth in recreational use around the river over the next 40 years, and I think that's, that's inaccurate. I think growing our population and the improved opinions of the river and the water quality are gonna absolutely grow the use of that, so happy to answer any questions.
Could you explain to us the, the pitch from West Pitch Park down to, let's say, Lewiston? Is that a sufficient pitch for recreational activities aerial?
I, I think it's good for a zip line, but...
Zip, okay, that's a great, great idea, Eric. Thank you.
I don't know if we can tie that to a mitigation for recreation, but hey, you never know, so.
Thanks. I know you started working on this a couple of years ago now, so thank you very much for everything on this.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. Yeah, that whole no increase in recreation is just absolutely bogus assumption, but I can see what they're doing because they're just trying to negotiate. So they just want positioning, so. Next, we have actually two executive sessions. So at this time, I'd like to take a, make, I'd like to entertain a motion to enter into an executive session to discuss economic development pursuant to one MRSA 4056C.
So moved.
Second? Much from Councilmore, and second from Council Milks. All those in favor? Okay, we'll have a second executive session after this before rejoining council for our normal meeting at seven. Thank you.
I'd like to call a order this meeting of April 3rd, 2023. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have three consent items. I'll adjutant motion at this time?
So moved.
And a motion from Councilor Staples, second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Oppose? Pass at seven zero. Next to the minutes of the March 20th, 2023 regular city council meeting. Are there any corrections?
Motion to approve as written.
Second.
Councilor Staples, second by Councilor Walker. All those in favor? And pass at seven zero. Now I'm going to move on to communications, presentations and recognition. Communication, we do have a request for funds from Mr. David Chittum, president of the Anderson Goggin Historical Society. Is David here tonight? No? Okay. Counsel and members of the public, a letter from him saying the reasons and the amount of the ask are all in your packet and on tonight's electronic agenda. Next, we have communication from L.A. Arts talking about programming review and a funding request for this fiscal year. Is there anyone here from L.A. Arts? Same thing applies, Jim Paralekis has a request letter as well as funds, usage rationale.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, so I have staff and myself met with L.A. Arts. Their proposal is in the request and so you'll see ultimately when you see the budget, you'll see what I'm recommending to move for.
Thank you.
I'd like to call an order, this meeting of April 3rd, 2023, please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda tonight, we have three consent items. I'll adjutant a motion at this time?
So moved.
And a motion from Councilor Staples, second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Passes seven zero. Next to the minutes of the March 20th, 2023, regular city council meeting, are there any corrections?
Motion to approve as written.
Second.
Councilor Staples, second by Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Okay, passes seven zero. I'm gonna move on to communications, presentations, and recognition. Communication, we do have a request for funds from Mr. David Chittum, president of the Anderson Goggin Historical Society. Is David here tonight? No? Okay. Counsel and members of the public, a letter from him saying the reasons and the amount of the ask are all in your packet and on tonight's electronic agenda. Next, we have communication from LA Arts, talking about programming review and a funding request for this fiscal year. Is there anyone here from LA Arts? Same thing applies. Jim Paralekis has a request letter as well as funds, usage, rationale.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, so I have staff and myself met with LA Arts. Their proposal is in the request, and so you'll see ultimately when you see the budget, you'll see what I'm recommending to move for.
Thank you. Gonna move on to council communications about and to the community. Is there anybody, starting off with Councilor Staples?
None at this time.
Walker?
Yeah, age-friendly is doing a free giveaway on the clothing for the needy. It's gonna be at the Auburn Library, April 8th, two to four, Auburn Library.
Nothing, thank you.
No cross-country skiing, we're done? Okay. Yeah, just checking. Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a constituent ask, they understand the rationale for how many employees per shift, like for the police department and fire department. I was asked at the 911, how many people staff it during the day and what's the number for at night?
You know, so the staffing levels shift based on time of day, but I think that they, just for those who don't know, I think Councilor Walker had shared this previously. They are struggling with staffing at the 911 center. I think all of our calls are being answered. Typically during a regular shift, it's usually around four, four dispatchers plus a supervisor, that's standard. It may go up during peak hours and they may bring it down during some of their low hours, but usually it's four plus a supervisor.
Thank you.
I'd like to communicate upcoming agenda items. April 18th, we will be having a joint city council Auburn Planning Board workshop with an express goal of discussing the agricultural resource protection zone as well as strip zoning. We will have legal there as well. We wanna make sure that, we wanna make sure that we get this right, and I think that joint meeting, honestly, we haven't had a joint planning board city council meeting since over five years. Probably a lot longer than that that I remember. So that will be on April 18th. A reminder, that is on a Tuesday because we have Patriots Day on the 7th. Okay, so on the 18th. Is there anyone from the council right now that knows they're not gonna be there because it's a Tuesday and B, school vacation week? No? Okay, very good. More communications, we do have the lobster festival, yes, that's on tonight's agenda, or approving the mass gathering permit. But I do want to announce that the Auburn Exchange Club, very familiar to most of you, will be putting on the lobster feed, no lobster festival would be complete without lobster. So they will be selling tickets online, they will be actually putting on a wonderful lobster feed, they'll be going on throughout the day until about four o'clock. So very, very family-friendly, obviously not very lobster-friendly, but that's okay. So more will be rolled out on that, just trying to speak the truth, poor lobsters. We will have the PETA demonstration area set up, about 10 by 10-foot area. So that is gonna happen, so if you see the Auburn Exchange Club, thank them. Turn it over to the city manager for any other communications.
I have nothing further to add.
Okay. Well, moving on to the first open session of the night, any member of the public can speak about any issue not on tonight's agenda. Please step up to the podium, give us your name, address, and leave me your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak during the first open session? None being, or close the first open session, we're gonna move on to unfinished business. We have order 33-03202023. Approving $4,598,331 of additional cost for environmental remediation of the new high school project and authorizing general obligation bonds and a tax levy therefore. This is a public hearing and second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilor Whiting, second from Councilor Walker. Open this up to the public, any members of the public that would like to speak? If so, please step up to the podium, give us your name, address, and leave me your comments to three minutes. Now bring it back to the council. Counsel, again, this is a second reading. We have to put it on the bond, it will be on the election if we approve the date on June 13th. This money will be completely reimbursed back to the city from the state, okay? These for cost overruns and really remediation of the PBCs, PCBs that were in the brick mortar. As for a vote at this time, is this roll call? Okay, roll call, please, sir.
Councilor Walker?
Yes.
Councilor Staples?
Yes.
Councilor Gary?
Yes.
Councilor Whiting?
Yes.
Councilor Hawes?
Yes.
Councilor Milks?
Yes.
Councilor Moran?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Moving on to new business is order 37-04032023. Approving the question for a municipal referendum election with respect to environmental remediation cost for the new high school, construction project, and general obligation bonds therefore. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilor Walker, second from Councilor Moran. I'll open this up to the public. If there's anybody in the public that would like to speak, please step up. Yeah, I just can't hear you. Get to the podium, please, sir. For, no, the podium, please, sir? Yeah, yeah, that works.
Did you ask about public comment? I think I totally didn't hear that. Was that, did that pass, public comment?
It did.
Okay.
I'm sorry, public comment for the last agenda item, sir?
It's the last, the very end, or?
No, we had one, we'll have another one shortly, another general public comment.
Okay, I can wait for that one then.
Okay. Is there anybody that would like to speak on order 37-04032023, which is setting the referendum? Nobody in the public, I'll bring it back. Anybody on the council debate? None being, I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None being, passes seven zero. Next is order 38-04032023. Authorizing the city manager to execute the sale of St. Louis Church, 32 Dunn Street, Auburn, Maine. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Milks? Gotta be fair. I'll open this up to the public for comment. Is there? Anybody in the public like to comment on this order? Please stand up to the podium, give us name, address, leave me your comments to three minutes. Nobody, I'm gonna bring this back to the council. Eighty-seven showings. Are you ready to authorize the city manager? Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. Vaya con Dios, Mr. Manager. Get it done. Next is order 39-04032023. Approving the liquor license for the Olive Garden. This is a public hearing and a vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I know where we're gonna go after our Monday meetings. Okay, I'm gonna go, Councilor Gary, do I have a second? Councilor Walker? Open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this topic, the liquor license for Olive Garden, opening soon? No. Counsel? Is there anybody from the Olive Garden that would like to come up? Okay, why don't you come on up, we got some questions. Just give us your name and-
Good evening, council members. My name is Pavel Bincheck, I'm an attorney with the Bennett Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of Olive Garden. They asked me to come down, attend the proceedings tonight. I know everybody's been really excited to see this restaurant come to Auburn. There's a big team working behind the scenes to make everything happen and try to get this restaurant open as soon as possible. Right now, we're looking at the end of May, but things may move faster. So really glad to be here, really excited to have Olive Garden come into this city, and I hope you all vote to approve the liquor license.
Easy enough, thank you very much.
Thank you.
End of May, that's great, that's actually the kind of the first concrete-ish timeframe we've gotten, we really appreciate that. Our constituent calls will go down significantly. Any debate on this? None being, ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed to the Olive Garden? None, of course, passes seven zero. Next, order 40-04032023. Approving the annual reports to the main state housing authority for tax year. 41, 2022, 3, 2, 3, 31, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Staples, second from Councilor Milks. I'll open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment on this agenda item? Please come to the podium, name, address, three minutes, none being. Bring it back to the council. Counsel, something we do annually, is there any questions, counsel? Debate? None being, ask for a vote. All those in favor? Passes seven zero. Next is order 41-04032023. Authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement with the Public Works Teamsters Highway, folks, effective July 1, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilor Walker with a second from Councilor Whiting. Open this up to the public, is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this topic? None being. Bring it back to the council. Counsel, questions, debate? Nothing? Okay, ask for a vote, show of hands, all those in favor? Opposed? None being, passes seven zero. Next is order 42-04032023. Authorizing the city manager to execute the collective bargaining agreement with the Public Works Teamsters Mechanics, effective July 1, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilor Walker, do I have a second?
Second.
Right for government, Councilor Milks, open this up to the public. Anybody in the public would like to speak or comment? Ask questions? No. Bring it back to the council. Counsel? Nothing? Ask for a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Councilor Walker, you voted for? Okay, thank you. Passes seven zero. Next is order 43-04032023, which is approving the mass gathering for the Auburn Lobster Festival event to be held on May 6, 2023. Public hearing and vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Staples, do I have a second? Councilor Moran, I'll open this up to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak? None being, I'll bring it right back to the council. Counsel? Any comments? Councilor Staples?
I think this is gonna be a great event, thanks to the city staff for putting it on.
Now, it's gonna be a great event. That event is also on May 6, starting at one o'clock, just in case you didn't know. Any other questions, debate, shameless plugs, none being, ask for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? None being, seven zero. Next, order 44-04032023. Approving the temporary liquor license for an incorporated civic organization for the Auburn Lobster Festival event to be held on May 6, 2023, starting at 1:00 p.m. Public hearing and vote.
Second.
Councilor, who gives? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Councilor Staples? Councilor Hardy, okay. Open this up to the public for a hearing, are there any members of the public that would like to speak against the lobster festival on May 6 at 1:00 p.m.? No? Okay, bring it back. Counsel, any debate? None being, all those in favor? Opposed? Passes seven zero. Next, order 47-04032023. Accepting the consideration of Riverside Drive, which is a gifted property. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Councilor Walker?
Second.
Councilor Milks? Open this up to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that would like to comment about being gifted this property from Gagne and Sons on Riverside Drive? Now bring it back to the council. Counsel, any questions? It's in your packet. Gives us some really great access to the river, view sheds and so forth in the future, it's really unusable in any other way. Questions, comments?
Yeah, that was gonna be my only comment. I don't think you could use it for anything else, could you? It's shoreline and it's flood plain, so.
Zip line. Anything else? None being, okay, ask for a vote. All those in favor of accepting this gifted land? Passes seven zero. Next is order 48-04032023. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a naming rights agreement of the Drummond Street Playground Park with Tiz Crowley. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Councilor Walker, second, Councilor Staples. Open it up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this? None being, bring it back to the council. Counsel, actually, and if you could, Mr. Manager, if you could just give us a, you know, synopsis of this a little bit because I don't think we've sold naming rights for a public parcel like this that I can remember.
Thanks, Mayor, no, I don't believe we have. I was presented this by Tiz Crowley sometime last fall regarding the Drummond Street Playground Park. Tiz sees this park as an important park for moms in that area. If you look at who uses that park mostly, there's mothers that are there. There are some improvements that are needed at that park. A couple of things that Tiz had pointed out was just beautification within the park as well as adding some benches to that park so that moms are there. It's already fenced in, it's already closed in, so there's no concern of, you know, when children are playing to be able to, you know, run right out onto the street, so it's pretty closed-in area. The, what Tiz had presented was that the park would be named the Edna Attic and Crowley Mothers' Park, which would commonly be referred to as Mothers' Park. She would provide $10,000 to the city of Auburn for park improvements. $5,000 would be received upon the approval of the naming, and then $1,000 will be paid annually. The naming of the park would remain the same as long as $1,000 was received each year. So as the mayor said, that's not something we've done in the past, we worked through this, we've been able to form an agreement of what that would look like. Tiz is hoping that they would be a, a Mother's Day would be when there was unveiling of the new name of that park, Mother's Day. We are hoping we'll have the trailer, the council, that you approved within ARPA funds that would have tools for the community to be able to use. Tiz would then get a group together, they would start working on at least some work within that, within the park, then some of the improvements would need the city to make purchases. So that, those funds would be allocated into a special account. Any cost would then be associated to that account. So you wouldn't see that come up in any, any future, in any future budget items. Tiz is very excited about this. I think that Tiz was on the city council when the adoption of naming of parks and infrastructure, I believe that policy was implemented then. This is different than that policy only because there's a monetary amount that's attached to this, so. So the same process, sometimes when the city might recognize an infrastructure or facility or building or a park they may want to name, usually there's a process of you open it up for nominations and those nominations would come in. This was very different. This is just to say, I'm appropriating these funds, then I'm looking to actually have the naming right. So, so that's being what's presented before you certainly answer any questions you might have.
Is that her mom?
I'm sorry, yes, that is her mom, so. And her mom, they, there was, there's a connection to that neighborhood as well, and so, so being able to make it Mothers' Park, yeah. Councilor Gary?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I think it's a good idea. I'm disappointed that this wasn't brought forward sooner. Then we could have probably worked on it more, and also maybe they could have, she could have got a group together to add more money, bang for her buck, to do that neighborhood challenge grant where you can get monies to help improve a property. So that place that does have a lot of children and it has a lot of activity, or there'll be more activity once there's improvements, that it could be even further along than what she's gonna be kindly giving.
Yeah, Counsel, I think, you know, obviously there's always opportunity for added improvements. I believe the funds that are being allocated for that size park that she's providing will meet the needs for that park. The council has a pretty robust replacement scheduled for playgrounds right now. Those will be continuing working through, but I think that there's always still an opportunity for that to continue to happen.
Because it'd be great if there's more benches around so the parents, the mothers can sit there and watch their kids and, and make it a real good spot for people, especially mothers with children, to hang out.
Counsel, I just wanna bring this for you to think about during your deliberations. I am extremely filled with gratitude towards Tiz Crowley for making this very generous contribution. Though there's two things that I think need to be thought about. One, can you circumvent any council policy by contributing money? In other words, can you use money to buy yourself around policy on naming in this situation? We do have a policy for naming after an individual. If it was just Mothers' Park and there wasn't a proper name associated with it, that might be slightly different. And I'm not saying either for or against, but I want us to think about this because next month, someone could say, I'm gonna give you $20,000 for Triangle Park, or Larry Raymond Park, or the park across the way that doesn't have a name. Then at that point, we're making decisions based upon what our personal, how much money it is, and what our personal judgment is of the individual it's being named after, right? And I do get concerned about that in a fair and impartial body, you know, how are we gonna, if we set a precedence? gonna, if we set a precedence, does that precedence continue until it's broken, and then when it's broken, what's the, what's the negative implications? So those are, those are two things I'd like to bring up.
Mayor, I just wanna clarify, it was not the intent of Ms. Crowley to circumvent the policy, actually, her request was that the policy would be followed, however, what she was requesting was outside of the policy, so that's why that was not used. But her intent was, here's the policy, follow it, I'd like to be considered, and so that's why it's being brought forward the way that it is, not based on what Counselor Crowley may have by offering funds to counter that, so.
Any other comments, debates?
Yeah, I sort of share that concern in terms of precedent, and I'm wondering, you know, if there's opportunities with other parks and if we would follow a different procedure or if we would maybe expand the existing policy to talk about naming rights with remuneration.
Yeah, I can certainly tee that up for you, council, so that we can now include that into that process in future naming.
Okay, is there anything else? This actually reminds me of a funny thing, I was doing maneuvers in Europe many, many, many years ago, and the Czech Republic was a brand-new country, really, well, outside of the yokes of communism. They were selling, beer advertisers on the side of helicopters, so they were making money, they had tanks that were sponsored by beer, that was awesome. I just wanna make sure we're not going down that road where we're having everything sponsored. Counselor?
Yeah, my understanding of Tiz's mother is that she lived in that neighborhood, I know this because long before I was a twinkle, my parents, my grandparents were good friends with Tiz's parents and used to spend time there. I'm more impressed, the money donation is very generous, I'm more impressed with the fact that she's gonna go down there, take some ownership of this park with a group of volunteers and get hands-on with that, and I think if you don't know how passionate Tiz is about history, then you don't know Tiz at all, or of her. I'm just proud of somebody investing in an area of the, of our community that's really important to them in a physical way as well as a financial way, so I'm gonna be voting for this, and it's not for the financial reasons, which is lovely of her to do, it's for her personal and her mother's investment into that neighborhood and into the community.
No other comments, I'm gonna call for a vote. All those in favor of the order, please raise your hand. Opposed? None being, passes seven zero. Okay, that was, that's out of order. Sue, am I tracking right? My paper agenda doesn't match. Oh yeah, it does, okay, nevermind, we're good. I'm gonna open this up to the last open session of the night. Members of the public, sir?
Yeah.
Please, are invited to speak to the council about any issue directly related to city business, which is not on tonight's agenda. If you could give us your name and address, and let me your comments to three minutes.
Alrighty, my name is Wayne Souza, my address is, what, Main Street or the exact address? Two five, two five six Main Street. Please, no one knock on my door after the meeting to ask me any follow-up questions. After that last comment, that last, that last item, with everything going so quick, I thought it was gonna be quick, I almost forgot what I was gonna say. Alright, but, not really, but, for some reason I thought that would be funny. And by the way, Mayor Levesque, I think you should be an auctioneer, you probably were in another lifetime or something, as fast as you were talking, I didn't even catch the first mention of the comment, man, you were talking so fast.
And I apologize for that, I'm a former drill sergeant, which is about the same as an auctioneer.
Alright, so, three quick things, it's gonna have to be somewhat quick. Excuse me, the underpass, as you're walking down the canal path, the river path, going up towards TD Bank, right is, right before the incline, right underneath there, that is, during the winter, it's a frozen block of ice for like, for about two months straight. I mean, I can understand if it's just a little bit here or a little bit there and not doing anything about it, although it's either a block of ice, or when it melts, it's a small pond, and it's a pretty big small pond, you have to walk through that, it's the entire section. I actually get up on the, on the side here and I walk, I hold on to the railing, so I'm not stepping in a huge puddle. I mean, it needs some more grills underneath, you know what I mean, it needs, it needs the, whatever you call it, the drainage, needs to be able to drain in different areas a little bit better, and plus the heat will be able to come up and melt the stuff when it's really cold, it'll melt it just a little bit here and a little bit there. I mean, that's, it's pretty bad, and a lot of people, through, through the gamut of socio, of the socioeconomic ladder, everybody walks through that, I'm not just talking people, people who don't have cars or who are homeless, it's the entire town of, the entire city, excuse me, of Auburn. So there's that, and then on, on Elm Street, you know, it's starting to look like in what I consider to be the cone zone over there, 'cause sometimes cones stay up for like two, three months, you know, the little, the safety cones, and I've seen them on the river path like two or three months, it's like the cone zone, man, it's what I come to think of it. Now it's like the, the, the horse, the sawhorse zone or whatever, you know, like that, that's what it's looking like over, it's been there for like two months now. I just wondered, is that like a permanent fix, is that gonna be a permanent thing there? It's just gonna, two years from now, is it still gonna be there? We're deciding what we're gonna do with that? I'm, just, it's kinda weird for that to be there for two months. And one quick thing, the bike path, see, I'm not riding a bike anymore, however, for the people who do ride bikes, at the very bottom of Elm Street, they repainted the lines for the bike path. So then you get to the next section when you cross over at the intersection of perpendicular of School Street, the second section, I believe that's School Street, going up Elm from Main and then School Street. So the lines go like this, inside, outside, to the bottom of, to where school starts, and then where this outside line is, that's where the inside line begins of the next set. It's completely ludicrous, and in my mind, I'm thinking, what were they smoking when they did this? Really, because that makes no sense, it's not safe.
Three minutes, so I just wanted to let you know, but thank you, so we've got three things, staff will do follow-up.
Alright.
And with you on this, so I appreciate that, your comment.
Alright, thanks.
Yep, thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that'd like to speak in our last open session? None being, I'll close this open session. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna make sure, address the Elm Street, just because we do hear from constituents on this, so our, who we had contracted for the striping of Elm Street decided to walk away from that job before it was completed, so that's why you see the temporary markings as soon as the road gets to where we can go ahead and fix that striping. Everybody would like to have that done, rather than continue putting the barricades back up and the cones back up. So that is underway, so Mr. Souza is correct on the way that was done, to have just been in the middle of it and walk away is not the best practice for any contractor. And then the River Walk is certainly something we're aware of, that was part of when we had talked about festival plaza upgrades, that included some of that walkway. We are putting together plans for the River Walk improvements, and as we continue to do that, that will be to enhance that section, which does have concerns, the, they do sand it, but then we also need to just close that walkway unfortunately, when, when it gets icy the way that it is, as long, if it's not gonna be improved, so, just the updates on those two items.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on Elm Street as well. When we have a snowstorm come in or a day or two after, there is no barricades there, and if they are there, they're all knocked down. I'd like to make the comment that they could be removed until you have the painting done, because nobody knows which way to go, how to go, inside, outside, or run over them, so I can't see why they have to be there, because it's really not directing anybody to do anything correctly. So the best thing would be to remove them, we wouldn't look so stupid.
We're gonna go on to reports, starting off with my report, just a couple of topics. One, last week, Monday and Tuesday, I was in Washington DC, meeting with our congressional delegation, Congressman Golden, Senator King, and Senator Collins, as well as their staffs. Mr., the manager was with me as well, along with the delegation from the Maine Municipal Association. Very, very productive meetings, like anything else in Washington, it just takes a long time and persistence and grinding, so we did cover, so you're aware, topics ranging from PSA mitigation, EMS reimbursements, CDL licensure, bus driver licensures, and several other different topics too, oh, hold on, solid waste management, and reducing red tape, it's always a great one, you know, so there's a law, and broadband access. We have a whole position paper MMA puts together, as the manager said earlier in tonight's workshop, you know, we're constantly playing defense with the legislature to protect what we have, the core, and then we're constantly working with the delegation to make sure they understand what's happening right here in our municipalities with ARPA money, with CARE money, have we started to see any infrastructure money trickling down yet from Augusta? Answer's no, they were very interested to hear that and disappointed, so we're gonna be working on that, so there's a lot of takeaways, but anyways, a whirlwind tour there. Legislature adjourned on Friday after passing a budget, they have to re-adjourn, waiting to see what happens there, and that's still unknown. If everybody does come back into session, I'll be going up to Augusta on Thursday to lobby and advocate for rail and passenger rail up here, and all sorts of fun stuff associated with freight rail too, so, that'll be Thursday. So that's my report, oh, and school board, talked a little bit about this, the budget, okay, there's two aspects of revenue that has significantly changed, I want you to be aware of, the full school committee will know the exact numbers on Wednesday, we're looking at six hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in increased state aid to schools because they made an error in their calculations statewide, I think it was forty-two districts that saw an increase, we're one of them. Couple that with our insurance rates, we're at fifteen percent projected increase, they're actually six percent combined, that's a significant over one million dollar additional revenue stream into the school budget, which will have significantly positive implications to our overall mill rate, okay? More numbers to come on that as it gets solidified and then announced by the superintendent. That's it, that's all I have, Mr. Council, we'll start with the council's, Counselor Staples, just work your way down, if you guys have any reports from subcommittees.
Yeah, the library will be doing a fundraiser in June, so keep your eyes out for that.
Who?
The Auburn Public Library.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to report on the waste of energy there, I was out there Saturday for a little while, it was a lousy day, so we didn't get a lot of trash brought in, bulky trash, so at this point, it's working pretty good, people bringing it in, although there wasn't many, so maybe next Saturday we'll have a big crowd.
Nothing, thank you. Nothing here.
Okay, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, just real quick, as the mayor mentioned earlier, the next council meeting will be on Tuesday the eighteenth due to the holiday on the seventeenth. Also, you currently have a tentative date for April twenty-fourth for an additional budget meeting. I encourage if you're going to keep that date, then we should make that, we'll confirm that workshop on the eighteenth at your meeting, so just keep that in mind and let me know which way you wanna go with it. Last comment on Elm Street, I understand the issue, the barricades are there because there are, people are seeing it as two lanes, and when people see it as two lanes, they're turning into the oncoming traffic, and we've had motor vehicle crashes, that's why the barricades are there. Last comment, thanks.
Just block it off permanently, it'd be easier. No, well, look at this. I'll just hit a motion adjourn. Counselor Milks, second from Counselor Moran, no executive sessions, this is it, all those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned.